And I will call the meeting to order on March 2, 2021, on a Tuesday. Lisa, will you please call the roll?
Sure. Alder Carter?
Present.
Alder Abbas?
Present.
Alder Harrington McKinney is a notified absence this evening. Alder Skidmore?
Here.
Alder Hennig?
Present.
Alder Tierney?
Present.
Alder Campbell?
Here.
And Alder Bedar? And I do not see her. We have a forum.
Thank you. Um, next we'll do approval of the minutes. Can I get a motion?
Move motion could move.
It's been moved. Can I get a second?
Second.
It's been moved improperly second. Are there any objections to me recording a unanimous vote for the minutes? I do not see any, so I will record a unanimous vote approval of the minutes. And I do see Alder Bedar now. She is present.
I am. I'm very sorry.
Oh, that's quite okay. Are there any disclosures or recusals? There are no disclosures or recusals, so we will move on. Do we have any public comment?
Um, yes, we do. Um, all our public comment is on agenda item number eight.
Number eight. We will take those up at number eight then. Um, we will go on to our discussion item. Number five is, hi Sarah, there you are. Uh, Sarah, would you like to speak to this?
I would, and I would like to share my screen if possible.
Tanya, can you do that?
You should be able to now, Sarah.
Thank you, Tanya. Okay. So, thank you for, um, asking me to come and speak about the new, well, it's not even a new, it's a upgraded, uh, APM that we had. So, this is in response to the, uh, new surveillance technology that was adopted. And apparently I didn't put it in here, but, uh, June 16th of 2020. So, why? So, when the common council passed the new surveillance technology ordinance, it required that we did updates to our current APM, which is, uh, currently entitled surveillance, use of surveillance cameras. And that was actually last updated in December of 2012. So, it's, it was an old, uh, APM and it needed to be updated. And it also gave us the opportunity to reevaluate the processes of acquiring our, uh, surveillance technology and then to also align the processes that we have for procurement and making sure that we, uh, embed the surveillance technology process within that into our different, uh, systems and processes that we have. So, some of the key 317 APM updates are, um, and I highlighted this because it's such a big one, is that it was originally the use of surveillance cameras and now it's the acquisition and use of surveillance technology. So, that's a much bigger, broader picture of what we are looking at when we're looking at, uh, what is being acquired. We also added the definition of, um, the section of what is surveillance technology. We included the new exceptions and, um, uh, with references always back to the ordinance. And then outlined the new processes. So, there are three paths that departments can take and I'm going to speak to those in a little bit. And then the new reporting process and how that's supposed to work. And then talked about roles and responsibilities and, and the updates that are, uh, necessary for agencies. There is a lot more ownership for agencies in the updated APM. So, roles and responsibilities. So, for IT, it's collaborating with the department in obtaining surveillance technology. And so, the key pieces here are aligning the processes and making sure that when, um, obtaining surveillance technology, that we're following our current processes within IT, finance and the attorney's office, that we're ensuring that all software and hardware requests meet the department's needs and follow the technology standards and policies. And in order to do this, I've assigned a IT staff member that is now going to support the, the, the business questions that are needed. So, when, uh, staff from agencies are requesting, uh, new technology, one of the key pieces that we're asking them is, is this surveillance technology? And I will show that, um, as we are moving through this. And then for the citywide enterprise camera system, it's, we do the design and the managing and the maintaining of the, the network infrastructure to support the system. We deal with a lot of that backend, so the connectivity, if there's issues, the remediation, making sure that, uh, we get staff out there to fix them. Um, and then also the replacement of the devices. And then we also help to facilitate the purchase of cameras. And you'll see again, as we move through this, uh, presentation, how that works. But it is the agency's responsibility for any new purchases of cameras to follow the process that is outlined in the ordinance and then also in the APM. And it starts with the agency. They pay for those purchases. That purchase is not in IT, but within the agency. So, for the department, um, we kind of broke it down into two pieces. And these are the, these are, uh, not all of the responsibilities, but some of the key ones that I wanted to highlight. So, for submitting a request, the, it either goes through the budget process or via resolution to council. And then also following all the formal processes and remaining compliant within our, our current city infrastructure. Um, after the approval, this is where there's a lot more for, um, department responsibility. They have to put it on the department's website, the notification of the surveillance technology. They have to ensure signage. They also have to, um, ensure that all new staff are receiving training regarding the department policies and appropriate use. They have to make sure they're, that they are compliant with all of the different, uh, public records laws and city retention policies. And then they have annual reporting. Another piece to, just want to highlight in the submitting of requests is that there is more, um, process pieces there. And we'll talk about those processes of what departments are going to need to do in the next couple of slides. So, this is just a real quick snapshot of, uh, on our city's employee net. Um, under the IT site, we have all of our different processes of, um, when you're requesting for purchasing different software or hardware, there are different ways to move through. But before you even begin with a surveillance technology request, you have to review the ordinance, you have to look at the APM, and then you have to determine the request type. And from here, then we move them into our different systems. So, if it was a new software request, they move through. And then within that request, we actually talk about what is the surveillance technology? What is its use? Who's going to have access? And then same with if there, if it's a hardware, um, request. So, there are three paths that, um, departments can do for purchasing new, um, surveillance technology. So, through the annual budget request process, and as you can see here, um, they have to notify the mayor, common council leadership and the IT director of any request made through the budget process. If the mayor or council leadership requested a department notify residents, the department's going to, will collect feedback and comments from residents. And, um, that will also, between the mayor and the, and the council leadership, they can discuss how, uh, a department is to collect that feedback. If it is a web form, if it's a virtual meeting or a meeting in person, um, after the pandemic, whatever it is, they will have those conversations and then they will collect that feedback and comment from residents. Um, if requested, uh, as I was saying, they will hold a public meeting. And then they will also post the intent to obtain or use surveillance technology on their website. And then they will have, uh, form there if, uh, residents want to provide feedback that will go, um, they'll be able to use, um, on the site. If it's outside the budget process, they're going to have to do a resolution. And then that will be basically the same process, uh, that, that you saw before. If they need to put that on the website, if they need, how you, how they're going to collect that feedback will then again be determined by, um, common council and the mayor. Uh, we will have a resolution template that is available for agencies. And this is just to help expedite the process and that, so that we can keep these consistent. So that when you're seeing them, that you're seeing the same things being collected that are requested as part of what was in that, uh, the ordinance. And then we also have another approval process, which is for changing existing surveillance cameras. So, this includes if, uh, they move a surveillance camera, if they activate new functions, or if they new, add a new surveillance camera of a previous approved type. And so, then again, here are the different steps. And I think this is important for common council, um, executive committee to, to note that there is, um, places within here. So, especially the mayor, common council leadership or alders of the affected districts will coordinate with the department to notify residents, including creating notification and outreach, outreach mechanisms to collect feedback and comments. So, again, that's where the alder of that affected district can speak to, do they want to do a neighborhood meeting? Do they want a form? However it is that they want to notify their residents, the department will work with them on that. So, the other, and this is a new piece, is the reporting process. So, annually, departments are going to have to go, uh, through and make sure and review their technology and make sure that it's in compliance. And then they have to do a report. And this report will then be, uh, filed with the common council by June 1st. And then the common council will compile all of the submitted reports and then submit them via resolution to the common council by July 1st. And we have also created a template report for agencies to use for doing their filing. All right. So, departmental policies. So, each department that's going to be using surveillance tech, technology is going to have to write their own written policy based off of the APM. And that will have to be, uh, posted on their website. And then what we will do in IT is that we will create a master list of all of the policies and have it under a city hall, under surveillance technology policies, and then it will link back to the city agency websites. And that's it. Any questions for me?
Alder Kimball?
Thank you so much, Sarah, to you and your staff for being part of this process for now, I think, three or four years now. And I really appreciate the, um, the detail that you went into and the, the levels, the multiple levels of coordination that this is requiring. Thank you so much. So, I had a question about the training, the staff training component. Will there be a, a sort of a, a uniform training for the general part of use and access to surveillance equipment and then specific training, um, within each department for each particular piece of technology?
Yeah, I, I think definitely for the enterprise camera system, we will have, uh, training that we will do, um, in terms of what we expect in a checklist. And then we will also, working off of the ordinance, have a checklist of, especially around, um, that administration piece of like who has view rights, who's able to move things, all of those different things that are really important. Um, who is allowed, uh, to give every, you know, to give other staff access, um, and, and those considerations with the, the training. The other part of this is that there's going to be some surveillance technology that will be just for one agency. So, they're going to have to create their own training plans that they're going to have, and I believe that that will be part of them that report back saying this is what they've done and, and this is what the, the training looked like.
And that process of compiling that, the, all those trainings, will be, will, will your shop, um, oversee that or how's that going to work? Because as you know, in, in the, in the work group that created the ordinance, we found just wildly uneven levels of training from department to department. And that was a huge concern, um, to the work group. So, is, um, you know, will that be your shop overseeing that or is that, you know, how, how will that happen?
So, in terms of the training, when it comes to the enterprise camera system, we will be responsible for that because that's ours, that's our software. Um, and we will have to, um, I'm trying to figure out how I want to do this. I think that what we'll do is, uh, probably create a template that everybody's going to have to use and fill out saying that this is what they've done. And they're also going to have to think about who the user is. So, when a new person is hired and they're put into this position, the training will have to follow along with whatever type of user they will, uh, that they're going to be. So, we'll have to develop that for the enterprise camera system. What we can do is provide best practices and, um, guidelines for agencies that have their own surveillance, uh, software and hardware and what that training should look like. But then that reporting would be part of what the common council office will be getting.
Great.
So, they'll have to follow up.
Great. Thanks.
Are there any other questions? Okay, thank you, Sarah. I also was on that committee and I commend you for all the work that you've done and the presentation that you made were very concise. Um, and so, thank you very much and thank you for coming today. Um, we are going to move on to. Yes.
Sorry, I have my hand up.
Oh, I didn't see it, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's not another question for, for Sarah, but it's just something for us to put on our radar that we have responsibilities around the ordinance that we passed last year in the approval process and also in, um, administering the, the annual reports. And, um, if we could put on a future, as future agenda items, um, CCEC discussing, again, the approval process and administering the annual reports. I would love for us to be able to talk about that in more depth amongst ourselves.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we are going to go ahead to item six. And, uh, Alder Hennig, would you like to speak to this?
Absolutely. So, this was, again, uh, coming back, got referred from, uh, prior CCEC meeting as the city county liaison committee and the agreement between the city and county for, um, management of the city county building. And I have a number of attorneys here to discuss kind of some of the background. Um, some of the things I heard before was to make sure that we weren't dissolving the city county liaison committee before something had been, um, proposed in writing for an agreement met between the city and county for the, um, underlying, um, legal needs of the building contract. And so, if I could have, um, from the attorney office, attorney's office is here to speak to it a little bit.
Dorn, are you going to speak to this? Oh, there you are.
Yes, I am.
Go right ahead.
Thank you, Dorn. Thank you. Um, you know, Alder Hennig approached me a while ago about, um, possibly getting rid of the liaison committee. You have to forgive my dogs, they always go crazy when I'm on Zoom calls. Um, hopefully it's not too bad. Anyway, um, the committee itself was actually formed as part of the original agreement with Dane County dating back to 1955 of, that deals with the actual CCB C building. Uh, I'm sure most people know that we're co-owners of the building with the county. We currently own about 41%. The county owns 59% of the building. Um, during those original construction agreements, we came up with, uh, structure to manage the building, uh, namely that there'd be this, at that point, it was just the mayor and the county executive would appoint two people each to a committee, they would manage the building. Um, eventually that morphed into what we currently have. Um, and that's the liaison committee. Uh, that committee was formally founded in our ordinances in 2009 when, uh, Mike May kind of streamlined our entire committee system. Um, in that process, um, he took the language that we'd used in the CCB agreements for years and kind of expanded the committee's role. Uh, the ordinance currently says that the committee is created to maintain a relationship between the common council and the Dane County Board, um, for the purposes of conferring on matters of mutual interest and to provide a forum to resolve matters where there may be a difference of interest between the city and county. Um, it's made up of an appointee of the mayor, um, three common council members, as well as, uh, another four from the county side, the county exec and three, uh, board members. If we got rid of the committee by, uh, approving that ordinance that Alder Hennig has sponsored, it wouldn't actually get rid of the committee. The committee would continue to exist under the CCB agreement. We'd still need a form to manage and oversee the building. Um, so therefore, there's kind of a, a companion element to this ordinance that needs to be, uh, that needs to go through, and that would be an amendment of the lease itself or our agreement with the county. I've spoken with Carlos Peblon from, uh, corp council, who's also on this call, um, about how we could replace, uh, the committee and maybe some, a working method that we could do so. I think we've reached at least a, a informal agreement about that. I still need to put it into, uh, language. But the proposal would be to amend the CCB agreement to get rid of the committee and instead replace it, um, kind of with the current model, which is that the county would manage the day to, continue to manage the day-to-day operations of the building. That's how it's currently set up. Um, but as far as, um, changes in policy and rules for the building, that that would go to basically a designees of the mayor and the executive, uh, the county executive. If they're unable to reach an agreement, then it would go to a panel made up of the president and vice president of the common council and of the county board. So, that would give some legislative oversight. This would hopefully resolve some issues that we saw when the dog policy came up a couple of years ago, uh, where there was certainly a lot of disagreement between the executive, namely our executive, and, um, even the common council members. So, I think that there could be a workable solution to managing the oversight of the building. The mayor's expressed her support for that change, Alder Hennig has as well. I think it would be, uh, county has, has also agreed that that's, sounds like it's a workable solution here. So, you know, if this all were to go through, we could, um, eliminate the committee, amend the agreement to provide basically a different method of oversight of the building, but I still think it would give the common council, uh, some, some say in what happens with the, any building rules, if there's any disagreements between the two executives. Um, so that's kind of where things are at right now. Um, I hope that all made sense. My dogs didn't interrupt too much in the process. And again, Carlos is on the call if you have any questions for the county here as well.
I have a question, but go ahead, Alder Hennig, and I'll go after you.
Thank you, President Carter. I was just going to ask Carlos, the, the, um, county corp council to kind of outline any concerns he had or, um, uh, aspects that he'd like to highlight.
Thank you, Alder Hennig. Um, I don't think the county at this point has any real concerns with the proposals. I think there's probably something that we need to work on in terms of, um, some more specifics, like we currently have some, certain processes in place where if folks want to make a request like to lower the flag at half mast, you know, that process has to be morphed from what it is now, which I think ultimately is, I think, originally sent to the committee and then back to, um, staff. Uh, we just need to work on how that process will go forward. And I think there's other ancillary issues like that we need to sort of talk through. But in general, I think what Dorn said is correct. I mean, we're support, we're supportive of this, uh, this change. We think in many ways it makes sense. And if we have that legislative oversight, I think it kind of still gets at what the original agreement was intended to do.
Thank you. Go ahead, uh, President Carter.
So, my question is, um, based on what we have now and what you're proposing, are we streamlining the process or are we complicating the process? I don't think it get any more complicated than it is now, but you never know.
I would say that if you replaced the current committee with just, uh, designees of the mayor and the executive, that it would certainly streamline all the basic stuff, the day-to-day or smaller issues. Um, it certainly couldn't be any worse than that dog situation turned out to be.
And I didn't even get a chance to bring my dog into the building. I want, I want that on the record.
That was a proposed rule change that, I don't know, it took over a year for that committee to, to do anything about. So, that certainly wasn't very fast. So, I, I think the biggest problem that Alder Hennig had with the committee itself is that it doesn't meet very often, doesn't really accomplish much. Um, and certainly there's nothing stopping county board members and city council members from meeting and talking. I just don't know if that committee ever achieved the broader ambitions that the ordinance says it has.
Okay, thank you. Alder Hennig, back to you unless someone else has questions? Doesn't look like it. Go ahead, Alder Hennig.
I was going to just mention, uh, aspects such as like the, the management of the flag, um, flying at half mast or various other flags. None of those issues in the last two years have come to the, to the city county liaison committee, um, as is. So, this would do a lot for some of those types of things that we might actually, um, start to have more of a process that we can, um, follow for them. Thank you.
Thank you. And Alda Furman, you have a question?
Yes, I think your council president. Um, I was curious if we have any sort of timeline on the revised, um, configuration? And, um, if we don't, um, should we be waiting? Um, is there any reason to dissolve this, um, and then wait for, you know, that agreement to be in place? I don't know if Dorn has an answer for that or?
Well, the agreement is just a matter of getting the time to sit down and draft it. You know, once we have the terms agreed to between the city and the county, we'll have to go through our mutual approval processes. So, you know, that would still start to finish, maybe a six to eight week process. I, I suppose you could have this ordinance be delayed until such time as the resolution comes through, um, approving that amendment. The one complication with that is that Alder Hennig will not be in the council at that point in time, and therefore this ordinance would die for lack of sponsor. So, that is just a complication. I'll throw that out there.
And can, uh, Alda Furman, do you have another question?
No, that's okay.
Uh, then I have one question, and that is, when is the, uh, city county liaison committee meeting, next meeting?
Um, there is no meeting scheduled currently.
Okay. So, really it's not going to affect them meeting because there's no meeting schedule, that you could possibly go ahead, both of you, and start drafting this? And it should be done relatively soon, given the six-week timeline that you said.
It, it could be done soon. It's a matter of finding time. I have other matters that have a little bit more pressing urgency right now. Um, and certainly I'm also on work share, so there's.
Right.
Lack of, of, you know, losing some time each week. So, just keep that in mind, that things are a little bit slower than they normally would be.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. And, uh, Alder Hennig will have to keep track of this, um, because it does need to have another sponsor. Um, and those of you here that are able to, um, sponsor it, um, please, um, reach out to Alder Hennig.
President Carter, you do still have a couple of hands up.
Oh, Alder Kimball, go ahead. And Alder Hennig after Alder Kimball.
Sure. Yeah, I, I don't think.
Sure. Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's wise to dissolve this before the, before the new processes are in place. If Alder Hennig can't get another cosponsor for this, I can assure him and others that the TFOX implementation committee is very much aware of this. All four of us are on this meeting right now. And we can bring this up as a potential proposal after the alternative processes are put in, in place to forward, to, as a recommendation in the council.
Thank you, Alder Hennig.
Thank you very much, Alder Kimball. I'm sure, I'm not worried that somebody else will take a look at this when the time comes. It, it doesn't have a, a strong urgency. That's probably why it hasn't happened yet. I mean, we, we started looking at this two years ago now. The, the city county liaison committee hasn't met in twenty-two months, I believe. So it's, you know, it's the same thing that we've got with many of our boards, commissions and committees, is that there's, there's no strong feeling either way. And, and so there's always more pressing issues. So that's why I brought this up. And the legal aspect of agreement between the, the county and the city was a lot more difficult to affect. So in, in speaking with the city attorney, this was something that we could move along with and at least get the ball rolling. If it doesn't go anywhere, and if, if we want to place it on file, or I can just drop it and take my name off, we can do that, too. I don't have a strong preference. I just was trying to work towards the goals of the city. Thank you.
Okay. And Alder Hennig, I think we can hold off until someone might want to cosponsor it with you. So let's not drop the ball yet. Alda Furman.
Thank you. Since we're in discussion, I mean, one thing that we, we, I don't think have had any sort of discussion here this evening and, and may want to have further discussion on is, you know, TFOX is obviously, TFOX Implementation Work Group is obviously very focused on trying to figure out a process to look at, at all committees. And we have no account, accounting of our committees, what they're doing, how often they're meeting. And so I think that, that's work that we're trying to put in place, a framework to go forward. I'm not, I'm not sure personally that it, as a former member of the city liaison committee, city county liaison committee, I clearly understand it did not meet often. It didn't sound like it was being used well. I'm not convinced that it's a great idea for us to change the agreement with the county. I think that probably should have a lot more discussion, probably before Doran spends a ton of time on it. We, we are cutting out Alders out of the process unless there's an issue. You know, I'm, I understand that the county executive and the mayor are a fan of, of, of changing the process. But I think this council probably, or more correctly, maybe the next council should be looking at, do we not want to be part of that process anymore? Obviously, haven't met often, so we haven't been part of the process. But I think, I think that probably deserves a lot more discussion before a ton of work is put into it. You know, do Alders not want to be part of it anymore, I think is obviously the question that I have not heard answered other than, yep, I agree. It does not meet often, and we should be getting rid of committees. I'm not sure this is the right one to get rid of. So that's just my point is, you know, maybe, I don't know if that's, I don't necessarily expect that to happen at CCEC tonight, but I do think there should be a better discussion on whether or not Alders want to be, no longer want to be part of this. Thanks.
And Alder Kimball, and then we're gonna go on to the next item. Go ahead.
Yes, I raised my hand so, to move us along to the next item. I will make a motion to refer this to a future CCEC meeting after, I mean, it may die, but I just want to make the formal motion. Refer to a future CCEC meeting after new processes have been developed to handle the coordination of city and, and county interests.
And that was a motion. Do we have a second? It's been moved improperly seconded. Is there any objection to me recording a unanimous vote? I see no objections. I will record this as a unanimous vote to re-refer to a future CCEC meeting. Thank you. Oh, Attorney Hennig, I'm sorry.
Please record me as no.
Okay. Lisa, did you get that? Great. Number seven, and?
Alda Carter, we do have a registration opposing not wishing to speak, Bonnie Rowe of 4410 Somerset Lane.
On number six?
Number seven.
On number seven. Okay, thank you very much. Number seven, who's speaking on this? Is that Grant Foster?
Yeah, I'd be happy to speak to it.
Okay. Go ahead, Grant.
Thank you. Well, this really came about when, you know, it seemed like it comes up every time we have a report and someone or more, more than one person asks either a common counselor or a committee meetings, what does it mean to accept and what does it mean to adopt? And, you know, we get a interpretation of that. And then we have a, we adopt the resolution that accepts the report, and what does that mean? So when I, I went back to look at this and talked at the attorney's office about it. And interestingly, our current ordinance actually says that when we accept a report, that we are actually agreeing with the findings in it, which is, I would say, different than the verbal guidance that we've gotten in the past from previous city attorney, that basically acceptance is sort of this neutral thing. And so I worked with Attorney Haas to just figure out, you know, what, how can we get more clarity here so that we're not having this conversation every time and that we know what, what we should be doing? And what, what we came up with in the draft that's in front of you really is pretty reflective of what, how Robert's Rules would deal with this. So in, in all actuality, we don't, we don't really need to do anything with the report. Just having it on the agenda is essentially sort of enough. And so even taking an action to quote-unquote "accept" the report doesn't functionally do any, you know, absent our ordinance, doesn't functionally do anything differently than if it were just there. A motion to place it on file actually would be the same exact thing. It doesn't, in, in Robert's Rules, it's just like, okay, we got a report. And I think one of the big challenges that I've seen over the years with accepting reports, and there's plenty of examples of it, is often those reports do have a number of specific recommendations in them. And to the degree that we aren't clear and specific about what we want to do with those recommendations, often there's confusion and there isn't maybe action that's happening once we accept or adopt or whatever words we choose to use. And so what this ordinance change really intends to do is to clarify all of that, to kind of get rid of all of the confusion and say, doesn't really matter if you accept, if you place on file or anything else. If you want to take any legislative action, if you want to adopt some new policy that's, that's embedded in this report, if you want to pursue some recommendations that are in the report, the council should do that more explicitly. And so, you know, have a resolution that says, you can say accept if you want to, that's fine. But if you, if you expect that that's gonna mean something, you should also have that very clearly in the resolution and say, we direct staff to do X, or we adopt as a new policy Y. So that, that's sort of, I guess, the, the heart of what this ordinance change is, is to really pull out what I think is a pretty confusing ordinance and something that has, probably hasn't really matched the expectations of councils in the past. And I think in reality, you know, our use of the words accepting and adopting, you know, hasn't really probably led to the results that maybe folks were hoping for when they, when they use those words. So that's, I think that's the summary of what this ordinance change would do.
Okay, thank you, Alder Foster, Alder Bedar, and then Alda, Attorney Haas. Alda Bedar.
Thank you, President Carter, and, and thank you, Alder Foster, and those who brought it forward. It has certainly been one of the most confusing twelve years of accepting and adopting, and I don't know what we're doing. So, including tonight, later tonight. So Attorney Haas, I have one question for you, which has to do with the habit of having a resolution that goes with the report, which I think adds to the confusion. So am I understanding correctly with what Alder Foster reported that, one, we could potentially just have the reports as correspondence that we receive in, on the agenda without having to take any action, which to me, actually, that's the most clear thing. Like, you get mail, you may not like it, and you may like it, but you still receive it. You got the mail, which is how I've felt about the reports. So that's question one. And question two is, do we need these resolutions that, that kind of become cover letter to, to this report that I believe over time have really created additional confusion?
Well, thank you, Alda Bedar. I think, you know, it's a matter of maybe preference. One option might be to have just a, a basic form resolution just to document that the council received the report. And then if there's any additional action, it could be either in that resolution or in a separate resolution. You know, the, I think the Madison Common Council, I mean, the, the practice seems to be, to deal with reports, to have an accompanying resolution. I, I don't think that, you know, having a written resolution is necessarily required by Robert's Rules. And you could have simply a motion to accept the report and thank whoever wrote the report. If you want to have some written documentation other than what's in the minutes, you could have a simple resolution to say the council has, you know, acknowledges its receipt of the report.
Alda Bedar, do you have a follow-up? Attorney Haas, I do have a question. So you mentioned the fact that we could, instead of having a resolution, which I agree with, we could have a motion to accept or receive the report. So if the, if we, a motion to receive the report, that would not necessarily say that you agree with the report. Am I correct?
Correct. As Alder Foster, they noted it, the intention was to clarify that any action resulting from a report, you know, needs a separate legislative action. And I would even go so far as to say, I mean, even the adopting of the report, the current definition of that is a little ambiguous because it talks about that, you know, any policies that are adopted, city agencies will be expected to follow them. But often, those still require separate action, whether it's budgetary or a separate resolution or ordinance would need to be put in place. And, I mean, I have obviously the shortest experience probably of anybody with these reports, and you all know better how they've been implemented. But it seems to me, even in the short time I've been here, there have been reports that have been adopted. But that doesn't necessarily mean it's a mandatory directive to an agency to implement what's in the report. And so we were just trying to find a way to clarify, remove the confusion about the definitions of adopt and accept, and just say, whatever the council wants to do, it can do, but it should do with a, you know, in the, in the form of a resolution or a separate ordinance. It's probably a longer answer than you, you were looking for, but?
No, that's perfectly fine. Alda Abbas and then Alda Foster.
Thank you. I like this proposal. I think so that create a lot of clarity. As a member of Task Force on Music and Equity when I was a citizen member, council accepted the, the council, they didn't adopt, what is the other word? I forget. Oh, gosh.
Accepted or adopted?
They did not adopt it. They accepted, if that's the right word. And I was just, you know, as a resident member, I was just so confused. I was confused what is happening and how this is working. So I think so for us as a council, we, sometimes we also get some confusion around it, but, but for, for members of the community, I think so we need to play clarity. So this is, this is pretty good. One quick, quick question, Attorney Haas, is about if we approve this as it is, this, this amendment, would that impact the previous reports, which we, which we, you know, we made those motions and adopted, and how will that work out?
No, it's a good question. I thought about that. I mean, it would not affect any previous actions of the council. You know, for some time, it may, if people are looking back and, and looking back at, and trying to compare actions of the council from one report to another, there might be a little bit of a disconnect, at least for, for some time, because accepting or adopting might not mean the exact same thing last year as it does this year. But I think, you know, longer term, it would, it would provide some clarity to, to remove the ambiguity about what it means to accept or adopt a report.
So Alda Foster, go, oh, I mean, Alda Abbas, are you finished? Okay, great. Alda Foster, go ahead, and I have another question.
Thank you. Yeah, I was just gonna also comment on Alda Bedar's question about, you know, do we even need to do anything? And I think, you know, as the, the language in there states that we may take no action on a report. And, you know, I would say that would be my preference for sort of, you know, run-of-the-mill, especially staff reports, et cetera. You know, I, I don't really find much value in creating a whole separate resolution. I think for, you know, if it's a task force that spent two years working on something, obviously, having a resolution just to acknowledge that, et cetera, is, you know, probably something that we'd want to do. But I, I think part of the intent here is that, yeah, unless we really, unless we want to do something, we don't need to, to, to draft a resolution or, or even have a motion, honestly. That it, it really could be, as Alda Bedar said, you know, this is, it's correspondence. We put it on the agenda, and we have received it by putting it on the agenda, and it's in Legistar. So I think, you know, it'll be up to whoever puts it on the agenda to decide whether they want to have a resolution or they want to ask for it. But I think it would be, it would, it would be a, a bit practiced and certainly consistent with Robert's Rules to, to not require, you know, any sort of action with a, with a report.
So it would, and this can go with Alder Foster or Alder, I mean, yeah, Alder Foster or Attorney Haas. So for, for reports, it would just be on the agenda with no action taken. But then Alder Foster brought up a good point, that if it's a task force, then we would have to take action. So doesn't that create confusion in itself when we're doing two different things for the report? I just, can you clarify that, either one of you?
I, I could share my thoughts, which is, I mean, if the task force needs to be disbanded, then, you know, we should do that via resolution. I don't think a report needs a resolution, whether it's from a task force or anywhere. My point was that we may, we may want to, again, just more like, you know, we do a lot of resolutions to acknowledge things and share our feelings on things. So I think there is nothing that would prevent us from having a resolution that thanks the task force for its work and accepts the report, et cetera. But I think with this new ordinance in place, it would be clear that that action and that resolution, it doesn't, doesn't, there's no legislative action involved. It's not really speaking to any, any of the contents of the report, which I think is really the point.
Are there any other questions? Attorney Haas, do you have any final words of wisdom?
Not, no, not in the presence of any questions. Thank you.
Okay. I believe this, this is an action item. Oh, Alda Bedar.
Thank you, President Carter. Just one suggestion that I would have in addition to the ordinance change, which I think is totally appropriate in a way, I would, and this is not gonna be past my time, but I, I would maybe suggest that some guideline be written that CCEC can review and kind of, like, have as a process guideline, including maybe potentially this template resolution, just so that there is clarity. Because, you know, we are talking about ordinance now, but until somebody has an issue, you usually don't go back and look at ordinance. So I think some guidelines would be appropriate, and it would be good guidelines for the council's office staff to also have, and everybody that enters stuff in Legistar.
I agree with that. And is that something, Alda Kimball, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Alda Bedar. That's a great suggestion and, you know, something that I hope TFOX implementation will also keep in mind since it gets into those backend will also keep in mind since it gets into those backend processes of committee things. Um, but with that, I'd like to move that we adopt this ordinance change.
Uh, we'll hold on to that for just one moment because I had a question for Attorney Haas about the guidelines. Um, Attorney Haas, would, uh, would your office be drafting the guidelines for that?
Sure, we could take a crack at it. And since Alder Foster and I have had conversations about it, I could, um, you know, bounce some ideas off of him. I think maybe based on our discussion, one question that comes to mind for me is whether there's a consensus about with routine reports, if the council would want to, um, simply put it on the agenda or put, put it on the consent agenda for acceptance or acknowledgement of a report, whether it wants to take any action or simply wants to note that it's been, you know, reported back to the council. But, um, those are the things we could, we could drive some language and certainly bring it back.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, Alder Kimball, go ahead. Move adoption. Do I have a second? It was moved. I, it's been moved improperly second. Um, is there any objections to me recording and a unanimous vote for item seven? I see no objections. I will record a unanimous vote for item seven, um, with the guidelines coming from the city attorney's office in a future meeting. Let's move on to item eight.
And we do have several registrations. Um, we have three people registered to speak, two available to answer questions and eight that are in support, not wishing to speak. Um, the two that are available to answer questions and in support are Samantha Clausen Rupert and Karis Elbeard. And then you have three registrations. Benji Ramirez Gomez is your first, um, person that wants to speak.
Sure. Go ahead, Benji.
Hey there. Uh, I'm speaking in support of this resolution tonight because I think that as we've seen throughout the past summer, as we've seen throughout the history of our city, uh, people are fed up with the, the school to prison pipeline. Uh, and so this resolution pushes forward a new direction that the city can start to take to allow, um, black and brown youth to really not have to start to, um, begin their relationship with both the state and, uh, city police. Uh, because frankly, that, that is where the criminalization of black and brown bodies begins. And here in Dane County, we have the highest disparity rates for incarcerated black bodies of practically anywhere in the nation. And so if we're really going to start to boldly address this disparity, it has to start with the way that we police and it has to start with our youth. If youth are incarcerated or engaging with law enforcement from a young age, it teaches them that they in themselves are inherently flawed, that they themselves are destined to go a certain route. And so this resolution starts to allow our youth to prosper and blossom in the people that they're supposed to be and people that they can be. So I would encourage the Common Council Executive Committee to adopt this, uh, and to, I believe there are some amendments that will be, um, pushed later. And yeah, without a yoke my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa, who's next?
Uh, our next registrant is Eugenia Maria Hyland Granados, um, wishing to speak and in support.
Um, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Buen dia a todos. Hello, uh, Common Council Executive Committee. I'm Eugenia Maria Hyland Granados. I use ella to she, her pronouns. And I'm the Restorative Justice Program Director for the Y W C A Madison. I have been a restorative justice practitioner for the last nine years. I'm here representing the Y W C A to speak in support of this resolution. I would like to appreciate, uh, the elders sponsoring this incredibly important resolution. We understand that Alder Bedar is proposing an amendment. We are in support of it as well. I would like to show special appreciation to Alder Shiva Bedar for the great work that she has done and the service that she has given to our community for so many years. Muchas gracias. What this resolution is proposing is already happening here in Madison. This move to make it a formal resolution instead of an agreement is groundbreaking. It would change policy to solidify partnerships, processes and programs that have been created to end the unjust and punitive systems of municipal ticketing and court involvement that discriminately harms youth of color. This diversion to restorative justice practitioners instead of municipal court has already proven to directly reduce racial disparities within the juvenile justice system in Dane County. Since 2015, Y W C A Madison Time Bank and Briar Patch, in partnership with collaboration with Dane County Department of Human Services, Madison Municipal Court and M P D, has offered restorative justice processes to youth aged 12 to 16, instead of receiving a municipal ticket, going to municipal court, paying and any associated fines and fees. At the beginning of this work, M P D was issuing, issued around 800 municipal citations to young people. In 2019, as it is stated in the resolution, there were 641 M P D referrals, 505 opted into restorative justice, and 83 of these referrals were youth of color. Through our partnership, collaboration and learning, we have developed practices which included eliminating discretion from the officer. So every youth who would have received a municipal ticket has the option to participate, as well as the creation of an internal system within M P D, so the youth automatically receiving a referral instead of holding a municipal ticket in abeyance. This means that the youth who participate have no record of this interaction following them. When going through R J processes, youth get the opportunity to be centered, to share their story, and we are able to work together to address root causes of what's going on that ended up in a police referral. This resolution would make R J not a diversion, but the first way that we respond to children in our community with the love, the care and the respect that allows for growth, reflection and accountability. It will also put responsibility on the adults and systems facilitating these practices and processes. We are in conversations of expanding into other municipalities in Dane County. This resolution will set an example for the rest of the county, the state and the country. Restorative justice is a philosophy that we should all embrace. As a Mexican immigrant woman of color with a physical disability, I have found self and relational healing within the restorative justice collaborative movement of radical shared vulnerability and law. I believe in the power and medicine of restorative justice and the circle process as a way to collectively heal from the harm and trauma of punishment, resist and dismantle white supremacy culture, share truth through our stories and transform our hearts and communities. I encourage you all to please pass this resolution and thank you very much for your support.
Thank you. Lisa, is there anyone else?
Yes, we have another registrant, Gloria Reyes, um, wishing to speak and in support.
Go ahead, Gloria.
Thank you, everyone. Good evening, Common Council Executive Committee. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
I'm speaking tonight on item number eight. I first want to thank the Madison Police Department for initiating, collaborating with partners and schools on restorative justice efforts in our community. The Madison Police Department have led us in our critical collaborators in the success of restorative justice. I am in support of a, of a resolution that brings accountability to the success of our restorative justice work in our community. I understand that the city's role in restorative justice is the work through the Madison Police Department and the attention, and that is the intention of this resolution. I am concerned that this resolution, however, takes a very narrow focus. We have a police department who are leaders in the area of restorative justice in the first place, who have demonstrated their commitment over the years to restorative justice practices before the city and, and the county funded the effort. It was successful because it was a grassroots collaborative effort. The success of restorative justice does not solely land on the Madison Police Department. If we want accountability to the success of the program, we need to hold all partners accountable. I urge you to include language in the resolution that requires all partners to work together and report back to the council on the success of the work that shall include Madison Police data information. You can't just hear from one partner in a collaborative, particularly not solely the law enforcement partner in such an important initiative. I also urge you to include language that strategic planning shall be completed with all city, county, community organizations and M M S D partners on how we all work together to ensure that our youth are being served. A comprehensive strategy that includes a community report be completed that includes data, progress. Where have we been? Where are we going? Documenting our vision for the future as we continue our commitment to reduce racial disparities in arrest and disparities within our criminal justice system. Consistently reviewing the plan and present to the council every couple of years. I will be sharing this with the county as well. The Madison Police Department is just one critical piece. As we continue to find innovative ways to promote community solutions to solving our complex issues of overrepresentation of people of color in the criminal justice system, then we need to think more broadly and envision a community collaborative response that includes funding and accountability of all partners to ensure that we are all moving in the same direction. This is an opportunity for the city council to include all partners who are hard at work in this area, restorative justice professionals and the Madison Police Department working together to stop the cycle and the criminalization of our youth in this community. I understand that restorative justice is, um, funds our community organizations, including Briar Patch, and you may not have jurisdiction over the details, but you do have the ability to get a comprehensive report from all partners and your investment is a critical piece to this partnership and that is the Madison Police Department. We need to center ourselves around what is best for our youth and ensuring that we are all held accountable and continue to work together. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa, anyone else?
No, there is no, um, other speakers in the queue.
Okay, thank you. Um, Alder Bedar, and then I have a question if no one else does. Go ahead, Alder Bedar.
Alder, I have a question. I think for, um, Karis or Eugenia representing the Y W C A regarding what we just heard from, um, uh, Gloria, um, so maybe, I don't know which one, but Karis or Eugenia, you can answer this question. So, um, again, I think, um, no disagreement with the need for more and broader restorative justice, but can you bring us back to the intent of, of this resolution and why we, um, um, we worked collaboratively, um, to, to make sure that it reflected the current state and potential enhancement of the current, um, uh, program that is in place? And also the second question is around the reporting. Um, is it a correct statement that you worked collaboratively with M P D to create those quarterly reports as a partner in this work?
Yes, uh, thank you, Shiva. So I would like to answer the first, the first question is about what we, the, the resolution that is going through is nothing different from what is already happening. Um, as I, uh, shared in, when I spoke about the, the history of this, this work and this resolution and how it, it came about, about the, the partnerships with, with Time Bank and Briar Patch, Y W C A and M P D and the Dane County Department of Human Services. We have been doing this since two, 2015. And, uh, and in 2020, uh, there were some, the, the M P D created a system so that the youth automatically will be receiving a referral instead of holding a municipal ticket in abeyance. So what the resolution is, what, what is happening is that it's becoming a policy, if I'm understanding correctly, like the wording of it. Uh, but we are not adding or taking away or anything in this resolution. I don't see anything being different from what is happening already right now. And already we actually have to, we have, um, collaboration with, with all the partners involved. We have shared documents about, uh, all the referrals and all the processes. We have been actually working a lot, uh, through, in 2020 to increase transparency, to work in our communications. We have quarterly meetings. It's really great collaboration. So I, I don't know if I answered the, the second question through this. All the reports that we do, we do it in partnership with the county and M P D has access to the reports. So the quarterly reports, we could even, the quarterly reports are being even asked or whatever, we could just even send it right directly to the, to the county because it's, it's the whole collaboration. Um, I don't know if I respond correctly. And Karis, please, please jump in to answer anything else.
Is that okay if I speak for a moment? My name's Karis Elbeard and I am the Policy Consultant with Y W C Madison. So I'm speaking today on behalf of Y W C Madison and I'll just, um, echo and appreciate everything that, um, Eugenia just said. Thank you, Shiva Bedar, Alder Bedar for the question. Um, so this resolution really just codifies what we're doing. And the idea behind it was one so that, um, we had in writing all the great work that we're doing. And this only happened because of amazing collaboration between the partner organizations and Madison Police Department and Madison Municipal Court. Uh, so this program is a huge success. In a time when there is racial justice injustice and strife, here is something that all of us should be holding up. Everything written in this resolution is codifying what is already happening. Um, there's always room for improvements and always welcome for changes, but I think it's important that this resolution moves forward to just codify the successes that we have. And as often happens, Madison can now be a model and there are many other cities throughout Dane County and throughout Wisconsin that have, uh, looked to Madison and its partners for the leadership on this and passing this resolution and codifying the work that we're doing will allow us to replicate it and find racial justice successes throughout the state. Uh, so that was the intent behind this, not to change anything that we're doing, but to honor, respect and codify what we're doing.
Okay, thank you. Alder Hinnick.
Thank you, President Carter. Um, so my, my question, my first, I've got two questions. First one would be for Y W C A. What, um, you mentioned quarterly reports that are sent to Dane County. So I'm, I'm trying to see how this process and the, the program is centralized, um, because it sounds like we've got the, um, the reports from Y W C A going to Dane County, but then the reports from M P D would be coming to the Common Council. Um, and, and I don't believe that I've seen those reports in the past. So, and, and it sounded like from Karis that, um, there's nothing new in this resolution, but it absolutely looks like there's some new processes that are being requested in this. Um, so I was just wondering, so what data is being reported to Dane County on a quarterly basis and how do we look at success in the program? Um, I see a couple of data points, but I'm guessing it's probably more than that.
Uh, yes, so we, uh, report not only to Dane County Department of Human Services, but we also report to the city of Madison, to the Community Development Department. And we collect, um, a lot of information. And we collect information about, uh, the referrals, uh, to M P D. We collect information about how many of those referrals opted in to restorative justice, how many of, uh, the youth decided to opt out, the reasons, what they, this, most of the time is like that, that we have not been able to make contact. We do a lot of home visits. We also report on home visits. We, uh, we have narratives around, uh, what it's going good and what it's going, what are the barriers and what is difficult. We collect demographic information. We collect all the demographic information. We collect, um, also the type of arrest or the reason why they got the, the type of, uh, of ticket that the, that is, is, you know, what it, why is it that they got the ticket? We, uh, track data in the process. When did we make contact? And when they go through the whole restorative justice process, uh, when they complete their agreements, because youth go through restorative justice process, there is a pre-conference and they, they go through circle and then after in circle, they decide on agreements. And then we collect the data on like when they completed agreements and when successfully complete the program, we collect all that information. Um, yeah, from this specific, we do a lot of restorative justice work, not only on this specific program, but we also do restorative justice training, professional developments. We work in the schools and we have restorative justice coalition. So we report all that information to the county and the city as well.
Is, is that publicly available?
Well, yes, it should be because it's for the, this is, this is all, you know, like government funded from the county and the city. government-funded from the county and the city. So yes, and we can share with you all, all the reports.
Gotcha. Is there a way that people can access that, um, information? Is it on the city-county website?
Um, we submit the reports to Dane County. I, I'm not, it's not of my knowledge right now whether Dane County or the city posts the reports in a public place.
Gotcha. And then do you also follow, um, individuals who have completed the program on, you know, success after?
Um, when they complete, when youth complete the program, we, we actually, the timeline, we work with the youth for, for like a while. It's not like, you know, like, like a week or something. So we work with youth like for a couple of months until, like, for example, if they, whatever they need for their agreements, we check in with them to make sure that they complete their agreements. And when they successfully complete their agreements, they are done with the program. And, uh, restorative justice has, uh, been very successful, you know, like, um, worldwide about reducing recidivism. And, uh, and this is like also municipal tickets are lower offense. So most of the time, we don't see, like, the recidivism rate is really low within restorative justice, but, uh, when the youth complete the program, they complete the program.
And what, in comparison, just for those of us that don't know the, the numbers, what are the, what's that, what are the numbers for those that recidivism, those that go through the restorative justice program for those versus those that, um, opted out of the restorative justice program?
Well, I don't have the specific numbers for our records, our personal records, no, our like program records right now with me. I can get those, especially from 2019, pre-COVID, which is like the, the real, I think, scenario that we should be looking at. But, uh, from the, like, the restorative justice work, the recidivism, uh, lowers recidivism around 70% in the, in overall with using, like, the research behind restorative justice work.
Say that one more time, sorry.
Like, the research behind restorative justice lowers recidivism around 70 to 80% lowers recidivism. I don't have the exact number from our program with me right now, but I can definitely get that. But it's, it's, yeah, I can get definitely that. Yeah.
That'd be great. Um, and then, thank you very much. I really appreciate that information. Um, the other question was for Carousel Baird. The, the one thing you had mentioned was that nothing has changed in this, nothing is being changed with this, um, resolution. Um, the last, uh, therefore be it resolved, and it looks like, it wasn't addressed in the email, it looks like we've got an alternate coming up, that, that MPD shall make no changes to the restorative justice program unless it's been obtained prior approval from the Common Council. Is that happening right now? Because I, I haven't seen anything from them.
Sorry, Alder Henick, I don't think I understand your question. Can you repeat? Are you talking about the amendment that's coming up? And I'm not sure if that's what we're talking about or if we're talking about the original language. I just want to make sure I'm fine.
I'm just talking about the language that's in Legisstar right now.
Okay. So can you repeat your question? Thank you.
Yep, the, the last finally, uh, be it finally resolved says that MPD shall make no changes to the restorative justice program unless it has obtained prior approval from the Common Council. Um, is, that, is that something that, or what was the impetus for, um, that portion of the legislation? And is that, is the Common Council currently, I haven't seen anything come before us that's, is requesting anything to the, um, restorative justice program. It seems like that was, it's my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, but that the restorative justice program was a, a creation basically by MPD, um, but the Common Council really hasn't had any, um, effective oversight or involvement in the process.
So the idea behind this, um, proposal was to codify the work that we're doing. So not just to say we support it, right? But to codify it. So the only way to codify it was to say, right, that you don't change it unless, you know, it goes through process. That was simply the intent behind it. There's also an amendment specific, um, my understanding is that that's been shared with the members of the committee, um, that changes it so that it's not about no, no changes, um, but that it's, that it's not redu- reduced. Um, you know, we talk about, as you know, I, I'll put on my other hat for about 10 seconds. I'm, I have the honor of, of being an elected official on the county board. Uh, I'll switch my hat back off, but I bring that up because we know as elected officials that it isn't about us as individuals, that we all will be replaced, we all will have successors after us. And the point of this legislation, uh, is not just to say that the elected officials right now, Madison Police Department right now supports it, and they certainly do. Chief Koval was a huge proponent of this. Um, uh, in a time when there wasn't a lot of collaboration between, with Chief Koval and people working on racial justice, this is the stellar, uh, issue that stood out, um, that he was a leader on and a huge supporter of. And we just want to codify that because we don't know what the city council or the police department or any entity looks like in the future. And to make sure that this is codified so that when changes happen, we, um, have a public discussion about that. But this wasn't in anticipation of anything particular, and the change, uh, proposal, I think, adds more clarity to that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Henick.
Those are all my questions.
Okay, thank you, Alder Henick. I just have one question. Um, Alder Bedar, do you mind if I slip in here? Um, Carousel, it looks like this resolution, and I was, um, very supportive of this back in 2015, but it looks like this resolution is really geared toward MPD. So my question is, because we don't have anything about, um, not necessarily listing the partners, but just saying all partners need to work together, can the YWCA, can Briar Patch and whoever else is involved decide, well, we want to reduce the program, it's okay for them to do it, but not MPD? I just want to get an understanding on why the partners in general, not detailed on who the partners are, are not mentioned in this. I think she's gone. Alder Bedar, can you answer that? I think we lost Carousel.
I can answer, and I can give some background.
Okay, and, and then let me just say before you start, um, the alternate was sent at...
Apologize. I'm here, I was just muted, but I'm sorry. Apologize, continue.
I was just gonna say the alternate was sent out at a little after five in case people, um, missed it. Go ahead, Carousel.
Oh, and, uh, certainly Alder Bedar, I can address this as well, but...
Okay.
One, there's no concerns of supporting that everyone collaborate. We specifically did not mention YWCA because YWCA is a partner because we're, we've received funding from the county. This isn't a YWCA, right, resolution for the county and the city and Briar Patch. Those partners can change, just like, right, this program exists because Madison Police Department and Madison Municipal Court have worked together to make this program a success with the partners that are currently YWCA. We're very happy to be specifically listed or to have anything that indicates that we should work collaboratively. That's, that's...
Okay, so I'm not saying you have to list the partners. I just said all partners should work together. Why wasn't that included? Not listing them individually?
Got you. I don't think there was any thought that we weren't saying all partners should work together.
Okay.
Right, MPD is the, is the city, and they're the lead entity. So, um, of course, we would work with them.
Alder Bedar?
Thank you. I can respond to that question and to provide broader background. Thank you so much, Euhaniah, Carousel, for, for speaking and for all the work that you are doing in restorative justice. So the reason this is about MPD is because we are the city council of Madison, and MPD is under our oversight. Um, the other partners and everybody getting along and working together, um, it's all really great and nice and, you know, but, but this is very specifically about, uh, department within the City of Madison and supporting the work that they have been leading and doing in an extremely, uh, deliberate, intentional way, um, that was never actually ca- codified and came to the city council. I think for many council members, it may even be new to know that this restorative product, uh, justice program exists and has worked really well. And so, um, we thought, um, that it was really important for the council to be aware of this work, um, and to the council, for the members of the public, to be aware, um, transparently of the work that's being done with our youth around restorative justice, to express our support for the continuation of this work, um, to thank MPD, and I want to specifically thank Assistant Chief Patterson, who actually is the person that really has led, um, this, this, um, initiative and work, um, on behalf of MPD. And to really then create a process by which we transparently can get those reports that are indeed submitted to the city and the county, but that we have not seen because they don't come to the council. Um, and by them coming to the council, one, it provides information that I think is important contextually for council members to have over time. Um, and it also creates a transparency because it then becomes part of our, um, public agendas, and other members of the public can see those reports too. Um, and, um, so again, um, I, I don't think that there is a necessity particularly to add, uh, you know, everybody in additional language. It really is about supporting the existing process, making sure everybody knows that we have this process in place. And I did send you two amendments, um, to the be resolved clauses that address some concerns that were brought up about making sure that we, um, really don't, um, I guess I would say, micromanage as a council and delay some expansion that may occur or some tweaks that may occur, um, that, uh, that are about positive expansions of this program. Um, but that certainly, that we wouldn't support any, uh, uh, changes that would reduce, uh, this program without it coming to council. Um, and last, I would say that Assistant Chief Patterson, and I see our, our Chief Lawrence is here too, but he can speak to MPD's support for this resolution. So I cannot think of any better thing for us to do than support a process that everybody's on board with, everybody really thinks is the right thing to do, and really expresses our, um, vision and values as a city to support our youth through, um, this type of restorative justice program and healing, and become an example of, um, how these kind of programs can be adopted by other municipalities. So that's it.
Well, thank you, Alder Bedar. And let me just make one clarification. And I did not specifically, um, ask why each nonprofit partner was listed. I was saying in general, all partners, and I just want to make that clear. The other thing, and I'll get to you in two seconds, Alder Kimbo. Um, the other thing is I think that we need to have a good understanding of, of what we're voting on. And I know this took a, a, a few minutes, maybe more minutes than, uh, some of us, um, expected it to be, but I think that the more understanding we have of what we're voting on, the clearer we can relay to others on why we voted on it. So the dialogue and the conversation and the discussion is very well appreciated. Um, Alder Kimbo.
Um, yeah, thank you. Thank you, Alder Bedar, for, um, initiating this and the, initiating the new language. Um, I am very, um, proud to be a co-sponsor of this, and this is work that I've been involved with tangentially since 2004, 2005, when, um, it was initiated actually by the Dane County Time Bank. And the Dane County Time Bank actually came into existence because it wanted to start a youth court, because Stephanie Ririck and the late Sherry Maples, um, really wanted to bring restorative justice for youth into our community. And they started the Dane County Time Bank to build up a community, uh, build up a network of community members that could hold this work and that could be, um, that could be supportive of youth experiencing, you know, issues in the community. And, um, Officer Greg Rosetti, um, has devoted the better part of his career to this work. So it was, I, I, I think the three of them, Officer Rosetti, Sherry Maples, and, and Stephanie Ririck, that, whose passion for this, um, you know, really brought this in, into a reality. And, and it took a lot of work. Um, MPD didn't embrace it at first, but because of Officer Rosetti and, and Sherry Maples, it eventually did. And it started off with a youth court at La Follette High Schools. The work was in the schools for many years, and then we extended it out, and, um, Dane County Courts, you know, adopted it. So, um, just, I really wanted to give recognition to those people, those three people for their passion and their vision for bringing this to Madison.
Thank you, Alder Kimbo. So the, the lead on this is the PSRC, correct? So this will go back to them. Um, Lisa, are you here?
Yes.
Yeah, do we...
So I need a motion to recommend...
Oh, I was just looking to see hands came up again. Um, Alder Henick, and then Alder Bedar.
I just have a, a quick question on how the Community Development Office ties in and how that, that work coordinates. I'm not sure to be the best person to, I, I just haven't heard them in, in this conversation yet, but they're in the resolution.
Alder Bedar, can you answer that? Or who can answer that for Alder Henick? Alder Henick, I guess nobody can answer that for you.
Thank you.
One of our attendees is indicating that they may be able to answer it.
Okay, can you have them come in?
Sure.
Uh, yes, can, can you please repeat that question? I'm not sure if I understood correctly.
Yes, the, the resolution states that MPD shall work with the youth program coordinators and the Community Development Office.
Yes.
So I was just wondering how the Community Development Office plays in.
Because that's the department from the city where we get the funding, uh, for restorative justice. So we report...
The, the, this, I, I thought the contract was with Dane County, so the city does also fund some of it?
Yes, we report to the city and to the county. I, I shared at the beginning, but sorry if I wasn't clear, but we share to this, to report, we report back to the city, and we also report back to the county. And from the city is the Community Development Department, and from the county, it is the Juvenile, um, well, the Department of Human Services, the Juvenile Justice Divisions. But from the city is the Community Development.
Alder Henick, are you fine now? Okay, great. So we do need a motion. Um, I've taken that, Alder Bedar, that's what you're gonna do?
That is correct.
Then I'm gonna let you have it.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt where the recommend, the changes that were emailed to everybody.
Second. It's been properly moved and seconded, but Alder Bedar, can you just mention the, the changes? Do you have it up?
Right. So the...
Thank you.
Um, I'd be happy to. The changes are to the last two be it resolved clauses, and are as followed. The second be it resolved clause, we will add the reports to be quarterly. The last sentence of that be it resolved, be it further resolved clause will be deleted, and that sentence said further, the reports are, include any efforts made to expand this restorative justice program or any process improvements. And then a last be it resolved clause is being added that with be it finally resolved, that no reduction of program scope will occur without approval of the Common Council, and that MPD shall include the court, in the quarterly report to the Common Council, any expansions or process improvements to the restorative justice program. And this be it final resolved clause replaces the current be it finally resolved clause.
Thank you. So now...
Sorry?
No, go ahead, go ahead.
And this will be entered into Legisstar as a substitute, um, with the changes.
Thank you very much. It's been moved and seconded. If I can record a unanimous vote without any, um, opposition, I will. Do we have anyone who is against me recording this as a unanimous vote? I do not see any, so I will be recording this as a unanimous vote. Thank you very much. Are, are there any other, um, items before I ask for a motion to adjourn? Then can I get a motion to adjourn?
Move motion to adjourn.
And I, can I get a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. It's been moved and seconded, and, uh, we are adjourned. I'm sure there's no opposition to that, and I will see everyone at 6:30. Thank you.